Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the town panel. Select for a public hearing on November 16th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. At the town office. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowling.
Jamie Percy.
Mike Gardner. Everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. We're still like, do you lead us?
Yeah, but yeah.
No, go ahead.
Attention, we salute the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have warned you, right? Sorry. Okay, approval of the agenda. Public comment discussion regarding naming a road located off of Middle Ponder Road. Is Asher Lane. Decision regarding the naming, public comment in adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I. Oh, we can say I.
Aye. What a difference. Okay, I'd like to open the meeting up for a public comment and discussion regarding the naming of the road as to Asher Lane.
Okay, I'll start. And the whole purpose behind this is, once the state standards are it, when you get a third developable lot, developable lot, you have to change it, change the name of the road. So that's, that was developed. I, these standards, far as I know, been in effect at least 25 years. It says any shared driveway or any length having three or more developable lots on it shall be defined as a private road. So at that point, we have to rename it. So I, as a 911 coordinator, suggest to the board that we name it Asher Lane. It'll be a private road. And then unfortunately, the people living on that road affecting you and your neighbor Jeremy Nell will have to change, you know, the name because of the new construction that's happening.
Will have to change their physical address.
The physical and, yeah, their physical.
You know what that involves?
I'm sure it's pretty cumbersome.
For one thing, the Nells live right on.
Yeah, but their, their door and driveway is facing the dirt road, not Middle Ponder Road.
It'd be different if their driveway came off of Middle Ponder.
Well, all they gotta do is let me get you.
What if it's right across the lawn?
But they don't.
That's their choice.
Right, so.
Something's going on with their daughter.
I talked, um, I talked with Jeremy this afternoon. He, he did call me and explained that he, and he couldn't be here. So I talked to him this evening earlier. And that was, that was his, one of his questions that I couldn't answer because his driveway is off of Asher Lane. Whether he would have to change his address. And it appears that he would have to.
Yes.
But I believe you're absolutely right. I don't think he would, if he made a U on his driveway and came out on the Middle Ponder Road.
Yeah.
It's not gonna help you all, unfortunately.
But the problem is, is he said three. And there's only us and now the Hurleys. So that's only two. And there's no other land where houses can be built.
Well, there's.
Because we own, we own the land by our house with the Turges.
Okay, there's a.
Because we bought that specifically so nobody could build that.
Is that the plot? If you look at that colored map, below 79, is that your lot? It says, I think it says Turgeon in the grand west I look at.
Yes, that's ours.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it said Turges.
Yes. We bought it together. It says Turges and Woodward, if you look at.
Okay, does it? Okay.
And the reason why that land was bought jointly was because neither one of us wanted anybody to build it.
Right.
You can't go over there anymore. You won't pass per. It's all wet.
I mean, the 911 guy told me there was potential for a building lot there. That's why he's had possible numbers there.
No.
Well, but I'm.
Well, what about?
So how many acres?
Up here.
Right, how many acres does, um?
How many acres does?
How many acres is Timmy? No, it's Timmy Hurley's.
I, I don't know.
It looks like it's a fairly substantial.
Well.
Oh, Timmy acre, yeah. And that's the other thing. That could potentially developable too. That's what they're concerned.
That can't be developed. That is under, from our understanding, that was under the Vermont Land Trust.
I, that I don't know.
When Stone Myers owned it, it was Vermont Land Trust. So when it went up for sale, what we were told was, and what the Hurleys also said was, they can only use five acres. And the other 25 acres are set aside for the land trust. So that cannot be used for building.
Well, he could, he could subdivide that five acre parcel of this, that's.
Not based on the Vermont.
On the, uh.
Only one house can be built.
Field. Only one house can be built on.
Okay.
You can't subdivide it.
He could put an accessory dwelling in there.
He could put buildings up on it.
He could put, he could put.
His barn.
He could put, he could put a, uh, an accessory dwelling in there for like a mother-in-law or, or something like that.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure about the.
I'm not sure about that.
But at, at any rate, at any rate, at this point right now, the way it's, the way everybody's set up here legally, Jeremy, you guys, and Timmy, all access your property off Middle Ponder Road on this private road, which is potentially, potentially gonna be Asher Lane.
No.
And that right away.
They can find it. They're gonna find it.
But that right away continues onto other parcels.
Right.
If according to the town map.
What parcels?
Beyond you and goes on to.
Can I ask a question?
If, um.
Backing bushes.
Uh, driveway or.
That's all, that's all.
Is that legal and would that, who would they have to go through to make sure that was even an option?
What's that?
Doesn't it matter which place?
Yeah, his, his door, I think it's, but it's where his driveway is going in.
Right.
It's a.
All he's gotta do is start driving across the lawn.
Well, he, he's, he's gotta apply for a permit.
Right, he can't just start driving across the lawn. He has to get a driveway permit from the town and get a curb cut.
Yes.
It's not just start driving across your driveway.
Right.
Or across the lawn.
He could do that.
Well.
He, he could, but at this point, for this public hearing, that's not what.
I mean, just think about every person that started doing that. It would be a mess. I mean, honestly, this is for your safety too, because if you got people going this way down Middle Ponder Road and this is Middle Ponder Road up here, there's potential that the ambulance could be going straight when there should be turning to your house. It's a matter of, you know.
We've been here 44 years. I think the ambulance knows where we are.
Well, you say that today, but I mean, there's probably people that know you on the ambulance, but in 10 years from now, it could be a whole new crew.
Probably not.
Right.
The ambulance crew turns over.
We're not just talking the.
Well, it looks to me like, but it also looks to me like, like, um, Gary Laitman Revocable Trust has a parcel on.
Yeah, that's where I was headed.
Right, I know. Which is 00612.0, which could be accessed off this road, driveway, right away, whatever you wanna call it. It looks to me like that one parcel is, which is already a parcel, no matter what, it looks like it's already been subdivided or, or it looks like it's a legal parcel to me. I don't, without looking it up, I don't know that. But that is accessible off of the potential Asher Lane, which is 06-12.0.
Yeah, that's, I think they call that horseshoe, horseshoe lane.
Right, that, right. Right, that whole thing is like horseshoe lane, right?
Right. Cause I guess Bobby Hurley could have come in from horseshoe lane, but she said it was a shorter access to come in this way.
Well, she also said when they were, when they were first building, that they were going to fix that section of the road and possibly rent on this side.
On the horseshoe.
So she could use both ways.
I mean, I just cleared it the other day, all the bar crap and stuff and a couple of weeks.
It's not acceptable by her. The only reason why we're here is because.
We need a formal right.
But is that a legal right of way, Tom, from, from all the way around? You guys could use that all the way around. It's a legal right of way to your property and to Timmy's and to the piece that you co-own, the piece that you co-own with Turgeon, that they could come off horseshoe lane up near, um, Laura Bries' house. And they could come in there and use that as a circular road, so to speak.
I could drive down it right now, but you know, it's, it's.
Okay.
Four-wheel drive.
But it's, right, right. Oh, I know. I spent a lot of time back there years ago. So that which, that solidifies name in this actually because Gary Laitman has, he has access off either.
Right.
Road to his, to that one parcel. The other two parcels.
Is that a dwelling? Is there a dwelling there or is that just land?
No, I think it's just land.
Just land, right?
It's just land.
But it's a potential.
Mm-hmm. So that's a potential for a fourth?
I think somebody went to try and build on that years ago because it wouldn't pass or to what?
There goes a lot there. I don't know what ones.
It's all swamp. Across from us and back the Nills, all the way down through, that's all swamp.
Well, they do strange things in today's world. Engineers.
That's why they make mountain systems, too.
Engineers are. They get paid a lot of money to make it work.
I see the potential, but I mean, if you, like you say, should you?
I think we're, you know.
Can you go?
I think we legally have to do it.
Right, we're still, I was just asking for some of that.
We.
Aren't we legally obligated with three dwellings on our road?
It's up to the board. I make the suggestion and it's up to the board to make the decision.
But by statute.
But it's the state statute, doesn't it? Aren't we legally?
Well, the state statute says it should be. I mean.
It's really, it's a 911 issue which could potentially endanger somebody.
Right.
Could I see that for one second?
Yep.
But still, it makes no sense when Nills' house is right there on the road.
It's thirty-three up on the Paul Road.
No, I understand where you're.
I mean, we like, we had built our house before that house was built. So we could just let them do that instead of coming off of the road.
I know all about it. We used to race snowmobiles back there years ago. I'm always a kid.
I think we legally have to do it.
I'm telling you that.
Oh, sorry.
No way I can read that. I'm gonna go by what you don't, right? Am I glad?
It's a test.
I hear you in a prayer.
We're just hoping here.
But there's no other houses that can be built there.
Well, we say that, but I, I don't know that. You know, I don't have the proof of that right now. I, I don't have any, I don't have, I don't have a land trust paper in front of me that says.
Well, maybe you guys need to get that before you make any decisions.
Well, there's a dwelling going up there.
It's up.
A third, a third dwelling is there.
It's in there.
It's up.
Right, that, I'm just saying.
And right now, there's three dwellings there. Jeremy's comes off.
The right of way.
The right of way. Yours comes off the right of way. Timmy's comes off the right of way. There's a potential for your lot to be split.
At some point in time.
At some point. Well, there is. If you're not, if you don't own it, 20 years now or.
We don't have it. We're written, built, 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 built that time.
Yep.
Right. So, so it's his heirs now, I would assume, that own that with you.
Right, and we've been talking to them.
Go a while, a little while ago.
Mm-hmm.
She wanted to go out, but.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, unfortunately, there's a potential for that to be subdivided off. And for that one parcel of Gary's, and I mean, look, if it was me, don't judge him by this, I'd come in off the other road by Bries', right? Cause it looks like a lot shorter to me. But stranger things have happened, for sure.
Jeremy's all faces Middle Ponder. He doesn't face, which you wanna change, the classroom, like, quite a long way.
My main concern is the safety of people. That's my main concern.
There's two of us. Two houses.
What's your address? Well, there's three houses.
There's three houses.
345 Middle Ponder Road.
So there's, all their mailboxes are on Middle Ponder Road.
All, all their mailboxes are Middle Ponder Road. I mean, we had the house built 44 years ago.
No, I understand your concern and but with the change of living status on that right of way or private road, um, that's, that's the only reason why we're even here.
But still, to me, it's two houses. The Jeremy's house is right on the road.
Well.
But that's not how.
He's going to the right of way though.
That's not how we're supposed to go by. We're supposed to go by that, his driveway is on the private road. His door is facing the driveway, correct?
I think his door faces Middle Ponder Road.
Middle Ponder.
In the driveway.
Middle Ponder.
Right, okay, but still.
Does, does he have a, does he have a driving garage under the house?
Yes.
A drive?
Can he drive into the garage under the house?
Yes. Under the house? Well, I don't know. It's under the house.
At the end of it, Mike. It's right at the end. So yes, he drives right into it.
It's not under the house. It's under the house.
Okay, I'm just trying to picture it.
But yes, he does. He drives, cause I saw the two doors. He drives right into it.
Off Asher Lane.
Correct.
Or potentially Asher, right of way. That's what, that's what I thought. Which, which.
Which.
Tells me that's the entrance to his house.
Exactly.
That's my interpretation is, if he comes off the right of way, turns right off the right of way into his driveway and drive into a garage attached to his house, then my assumption is he's going through his garage to get into his house. If it's in a garage.
They have a front door and they have a back.
But I'm sure there's a door that goes from his garage into his house.
Yeah, I'm sure there is too. There is ours too, but we just go through our front door.
And that's where your driveway goes to, right?
Our driveway goes through our garage.
Right.
I, you know, I, I mean, I would find it.
I think you're splitting.
I'd find, right, right. We're splitting hairs here, cause I'd find it highly unlikely that you'd pull into your garage and then carry groceries when you have a door to go in from your garage into your house, carry groceries around to the front or the back doors, up through the outdoors.
My front door is right there where my.
I'm not saying yours. I'm not, I'm not disputing what you're telling.
And driveways. The front doors are one point.
Right.
Right.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah, they're all.
And you're talking. You know what hell this is gonna put us through with? They're gonna change everything from.
I'm trying to wear a person. I can't change.
To social security.
It's gonna cost you 52 bucks.
Everything. It's ridiculous. We've been there 44 years.
And I get that, but it's anybody that changes and gets married or gets divorced or whatever, you still have to do it all. We all have to do it. And it's for the safety. That's my main concern is the safety of people.
There's two people.
Does it matter? Would you like one of you guys to get her or your neighbor to get?
You're looking at it as you, two people.
Or drive it. It's like, who, well, I think it's two houses. Basically, our, our neighbors, the Hurleys.
I'm sorry. There's three.
I mean, unfortunately, it's change and change happens and we have to go with it.
All right. And I, I mean, I, I, I talked with Jeremy tonight. I, and he has the same exact concern as you do. It's a, it's a burden to.
Yeah, he will work in the house.
It's a burden to, to change.
And technically, I didn't even have to, you, we don't even have to notify you guys if the board makes the decision. We don't even have to notify the residences, what my 911 guy told me, but I felt, I felt obligated to go knock on your door and tell you people. I just felt it was a courtesy thing.
And I don't think you, I believe there's a timeframe that.
Well, that's the next thing we're gonna discuss when you make a decision.
As far as, yeah, but even make a decision, but to take and get your license, the address on your license changed.
Oh, yeah, that, they usually, don't think of it like six months or something?
Yeah.
They used to, New York State, I think.
Like this, I mean, that would.
Thank you, if, if.
Let me ask you this, and maybe you don't know the answer to this.
If you're taken.
Sorry, Jim. Is there an appeal process after, let's, let's say we voted to name it Asher Lane? Is there an appeal process period, um?
That they could, not to my knowledge, cause I talked to her and I knew she was concerned, so I called Tyler.
Okay.
My guy, and he said, I said, "We have a very concerned resident." I said, "What happens?" He said, "Unfortunately, if the board decides to name it, they have to go with it." He did not tell me there was anything of such appeal process. Cause I was concerned. I knew she was concerned.
Oh, I understand. Thank you for checking on that. It's just a question in my head.
Yep. Yeah, I did.
And I thank you for letting us know. But the, the whole, there's just no more houses that can be built up there. That's my concern.
I, I kinda researched that. Land trust. From what I've read, it's making use five acres.
But they could put like a mobile home on that five acres, can't they? Or next to the house?
So, so, I don't. The land trust, because I have property that's in the land trust, okay? So the land trust doesn't own that 25 acres. Okay, the land, the land trust doesn't own the 25 acres.
It was a total of 30.
Right, but they don't even own, they don't own any land there at all.
They manage it, right?
The land trust owns the development rights to that property. Okay? That's, that's how the land trust goes. Now, at this point in time, and, and let's all hope for ever, that the land trust, Vermont Land Trust, stays where they're headed or where they're, in the direction that they're going, and they don't develop land that they own the land, the, the development rights to. It doesn't mean that it can't be developed. It means at this time, they own the development rights.
Right now, we believe they can.
That's right.
Unless the state changes the law.
But if the Vermont Land Trust changes their position on what they're doing, some crazy person, for lack of a better term, right now, gets into the land trust and they're in charge and the, and they get people on the board and they say, "Watch this. We're gonna make a lot of money."
Right.
For all the land that's, that's been preserved in the state. Um, th- there's a potential for that to happen. Look, I, I, I really find it hard to believe that it ever would.
Yeah, I don't think it ever happens.
Me neither. But stranger things, stranger things have happened, right?
Now you're a state of Vermont, the way they are.
No, and that's, I'm with you. I'm totally with you on that. But the potential, and I, you know, I just wanna throw that out there. There is, there is, you know, they don't own the land. They own the development rights to it.
So what happens then? Cause I'm sure Jeremy's gonna show up and say, "Okay, what happened at the meeting?" If they, we tell them that they would be considered Middle Ponder Road if they, their driveway came right off of Middle Ponder Road.
But it doesn't.
Not off of them. And so they applied for a driveway permit, like you said. So then they wouldn't be considered part. It would still just be us and the Hurleys.
I would have to talk to Tyler and see if he still, he feels there's potential for further development and this is what triggered it, but.
It's all there is.
Again, we're leaving Hurley's up there without a number, in limbo, without a number for 911.
Right, because you can't, you can't give them a number.
Correct.
At this point in time, right, until we name the road.
So right now, we have a house up there without a number.
And I, that's so not safe. I'm sorry.
You can't add.
They can't add Middle Ponder Road.
You couldn't.
What if their house caught on fire or something and they couldn't find it?
You couldn't say it's 345A.
I'm sorry.
Right, Middle Ponder Road, right? Okay, okay.
Because it, it's the third house at this time and.
What if it's changed to Asher Road and then Jeremy does, puts the, the driveways?
Well, in the meantime, she has to have a number, so I don't know what kinda timeframe we're talking. If he applied for that, got approved for that, not approved for that. I mean, in the meantime, we have a house up there without a number.
Why, why couldn't they be considered Middle Ponder Road until some of this final decision is made?
That's a question for Tyler. He said if there was any questions, you could certainly call him, but he said ultimately, if the board makes the decision, then you have to go with it. I make the suggestions. They, they're the final one making the decisions.
Cause what they're doing, as far as we know, as of now, there is no development. No additional development that's gonna be up there or anywhere that's around us. Because we specifically bought the land, so there wouldn't be.
But the potential was still there.
And that's what we really have to.
That's what Tyler says, potential.
That's what we have to go by.
And that's, that's.
And that state, that state standard that if there's three dwellings.
In the future.
But there really isn't three. I mean, they're right on Middle Ponder Road. That's.
There's three driveways coming to Asher Lane. That's, if your driveway and Jeremy's driveway were on Middle Ponder Road, then.
Well, there's no way our driveway could be on Middle Ponder.
I'm just saying, but that's not the case.
Jeremy's, but our's.
I'm just.
Right now, right now, I have to agree with Angie on this. We have a potential for an extremely unsafe situation with Timmy and Bobby Joe, I think, right?
Yeah, Bobby Joe, yeah. Without having a number.
Without having a number, if something, God forbid, something happens and they have to call for a fire department or a rescue squad or anything.
Even the police department.
Yeah, they're, they, they don't have an address for anybody to even try to find. What, what do they say? You know, come past, turn off Middle Ponder Road on the Woodards driveway and come out through and turn left onto our driveway? You see where I'm going with this? You know, and I, you know, I'm not trying to be.
I know, but they can use our address, basically, is what they've been doing. We used to be getting those delivered.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm struggling with that.
Cause they don't have an address.
Just because of that.
Being out there and using the rescue squad for my family on numerous times. I can't not let somebody have a number. I can't. I'm sorry.
What I'm saying is, it should just be a Middle Ponder Road.
That's not how it works, unfortunately. And I feel for you that you guys have been there for 44 years.
I've been there that says appeal.
But I make a motion that we change the name.
So what happens though, if this, this happened with Jeremy who comes off the road?
To Asher Lane.
Then, then they're gonna be Middle Ponder Road anyway, cause it's only two houses.
But we can't just sit here and say.
You can't assume.
What if, or assume or assume and let months and months and months go by and God forbid something happen. My heart is going just like this right now because I can't sit here and let this go by without doing the right thing. I'm sorry. That's just me.
No reason why it can't be Middle Ponder.
Thirty, thirty-something years or whatever I had in the fire service here in town and I can tell you.
Seconds matter. Second.
Tell me that the Hurleys could put a mailbox out there with another number on it. Put a mailbox there.
I'm, I'm, I'm also looking at the future. I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the other parcel that he owned with the Turges.
And that's where Tyler's coming from too. He's saying, "And there's potential." It's.
Yeah. And there is potential.
There is potential.
If something happens to you and Tom on the way home this afternoon.
And you said this.
Or this evening, right? And Bill and Mona aren't here, right, to make their decision. So, so the owner of, the owners of that piece of property right there are no longer Bill and Mona and you two, correct? Now, now it becomes.
Six was owned by four, whatever.
Right, right? Now, now it's, now, now it's a big can of worms, no matter what, right?
Also, the can of worms, that food.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
And along with Asher Drive. I mean, where did that thing come from?
We're not playing around, you know?
What, right?
Well, the guy that put the clay in my driveway.
You know, and then, and then I also see the potential for, like I said, for that one piece that Gary Laitman owns.
Yeah.
Over there. And, and I can't tell you that it's not a buildable piece. And when I look at, when I look at this aerial photograph right now.
Yeah, and that's what he's saying too.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the piece that you all co-own. I'm, I'm looking at that.
The Lambert piece, I know. When the Harxers lived in, we're back in what's his, uh.
Yep.
Their son Jason and his wife Leanne. We're looking at a building on that lot.
And which one?
The Lambert, one you're talking about. But it's, it wouldn't pass per. It's, it's all swamp.
Oh, Laitman?
Laitman.
Yeah, I know whatever it is, yeah.
There's Gary Laitman, that one.
Yeah, I think he owns, I think he owns all three of those, actually. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, his name is pretty much, well, it's over two of them.
Over two. I know they own two of them. Cranny owned one.
Yeah, and see, that's where. Yeah, and see, that's where Tyler still had a question there, because he put a question mark, that, that's potential. Lampman, see on the aerial?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not...
That's over on, on Horseshoe Road.
One of them. The other one borders both.
Right. So does Quackenbush, technically, if they want to subdivide.
Right, that's a good point. Quackenbush, how many, do we know how many acres Quackenbush is, those? I, I'm pretty sure that...
Four acres.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is four?
It's pretty close to four.
Yeah. So, you know, without, without having that information right here in front of me. Hannah, do you have that available really quick or not? If I give you the...
Yeah, Ralph.
Ralph Quackenbush? Thank you.
Well, it also comes off of this right of way, at the same time.
So they could, I just want to see if they technically could subdivide their piece of property. Bear with me for a minute, I'm sorry. I just want to see if it's big enough in that. So that's big enough, that's big enough to be subdivided.
Pownell School is built to...
It's big enough, it's big enough to be subdivided.
Right.
Legally.
That's...
By, by our zoning bylaws. That you only need two acres. So it, in that, in that zoning district, I think that's our, I tell you, I'm not...
Just, so even hypothetical then, what you're telling me, even if say Jeremy came in off of Middle Pownell and not off of our right of way? And there's the two of us, the Woodwards and the Hurleys? It would still change anyways?
I think what we have to do as a board, and I think we have to look at...
What is today, what's happening?
I think, I think we have, I think, I think, there's a couple of things I think we need to look at over here, in my opinion. This is how I'm interpreting this, okay? And what these guys do, that's, they're their own people, right? I'm looking at it, is I have a house, I have a residence right now, that is, does not have a 911 address.
Right.
Okay? And if, God forbid, something happens, they, they don't have an address, okay? That's a huge concern for me. I also have to look at the bigger picture, and this is where I have to look at it, because I am, you know, I'm the zoning administrator now, so I do know, you know, the zoning laws, not great, but pretty good. Um, I have to look a lot of things up, but I know that Quackenbushes could be subdivided. Now, whether it passes perk or not, not my, that's not my job, right? They hand me a piece of paper that says, "Here's an engineered plan for a septic system," and, and, right? And then, okay, that's fine, then we can process it. I also look at Gary Lammon's property on that as, now, now if the road didn't go past there, which I knew the road went around there, Tom, that's why I asked you. If that right of way was blocked off...
Well, it was, it's all been cleared at that point.
Yeah, but it's always, I think it's a legal right of way, all the way around there, on everybody's property, if I remember right.
And that's why, and that's why Tyler...
I know, I know, but it's on the deed and it's a legal right. So, which, whether it's used or not, it can be blown open when the bulles are in two hours and now it's a road, right? So I look at the, at Quackenbushes, Ralph's could be potentially subdivided. He's probably not going to, but if he sold it, somebody could. Well, we, it's 4.4. Yeah, it's 4.4 acres, Hannah looked it up. So then, and I'm glad she could give me that information, so that that helps me, helps us. Gary Lammon's could come off that, like I said, if it was me, I'd come off the other side, excuse me, but, whatever. Stranger things have happened, right? I also look at the piece that's already subdivided your second piece of property and say the potential is there for that to be built on. Once again, it's been a long time since I've been up there, I was, I was a kid. But, and I, and I don't doubt that it's wet. I, I don't, you know, but the potential's there, because that's already the existing lot, the same as Gary's. They don't have to be created, it doesn't matter how many acres those lots are, because they've already been created however many years ago. So they're a legal lot that someone could build on. There's a potential to build on those two parcels. Because, the size, I guess what I'm saying about that, Tom, is the size is irrelevant to, you know, those two lots don't have to be two acres, I don't know how big your second lot is.
Two hundred square meters, 1.1.
Right, so, that, but, it's an existing lot in the town of Pownell, so it's grandfathered in to be a buildable lot. Okay, does that make sense?
Quackenbush is land. That is all on Horseshoe Lane. Her, uh, the Hurley's land was down at that, but sometimes they're regular.
Do you, did you have, did they have this map?
Yeah, they did.
Yes.
Is this, is this inaccurate, as far as you're concerned? Is that accurate? You can, you can use mine, but I didn't bring mine either, so...
The Hur, uh, the Hurley's land, they're all... It's, it's in that section, that Hurley's section, that it's not being used right now.
Hmm, hmm. It looks like Quackenbush could come off Horseshoe Lane.
Or...
Or this right of way, right now.
If he did subdivide that, it would be on the Horseshoe Lane.
We don't know.
Possibly, right, could be an assumption.
For sure, it depends on, on his property, so...
Hmm? I mean, if we're going by this map that we have right here, and, and everything, all the information we have, it looks to me like his property, Quackenbush's property comes over onto what would become Asher Lane if it was so renamed.
No, it doesn't hold that far. Horseshoe Lane doesn't hold that far, you know, that's what matters.
Here's a stupid question, though. Couldn't just Hurley's be considered Asher Lane?
No, you, you don't, you don't name a road just for one house.
Right. The criteria is three.
Yes.
More than a stupid question, it's a good question. I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to find the answer. I know.
Stay for a bit, like, I don't like...
I understand.
And die in the same place.
I understand.
Well, you will, just a little different name.
I don't like the name.
Do you have a new proposal?
No.
Well, you know, would, would you have something that was more appealing, I guess, to, to you? And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna agree with you, you've lived there for 44 years and I know that.
The options.
If you have a suggestion...
Remember, there were As, there were As for a reason, because there is no road.
Because there's not a lot of As, and I have to check with the other bordering towns to make sure there's not another name.
That's why, we had three names to choose.
Wasn't one actually in the whole state of Vermont, which was good.
Right, exactly. I live on, I live on Center Street, and I've had to change three times in my lifetime, because I've been there. It went from Route 7 to Old 7 to Center Street, so I get it, it's a pain in the butt.
It used to be RR15265.
Hmm.
And we've had to change because of E911, I mean, I get it.
But that was back 20 something years ago.
Right.
I get it, but...
You have mine?
You know what? I'm old.
So am I.
Deal with it.
I'm sorry, we get it, but...
We can't have people without...
Right.
A number.
Stop, you're not that, you're not that old that coaches Sunday baseball, so stop, okay?
Middle Pownell Road extension.
They don't let us do that.
There's not such a thing as Middle Pownell Road extension.
All right, I had a motion on the table.
Did I give you a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Do we have any more discussion?
I would like to discuss if you decide to name it, when it would be effective.
I mean, is that, is there enough time if things change, like...
I think if they make a motion to decide, that's decided.
The driveway in from Middle Pownell Road, that changes the whole situation, right?
But if they're making a decision tonight, they're making a decision, is my understanding.
I didn't see...
So I propose, I was talking to Tyler, and typically, we don't like to change addresses, like November to January because of the holidays. So he suggests that I do 105, which would be Hurley's immediately, and I wait and change you and Jeremy's on January 1, effective January 1.
And that would give you time from that point after?
Gives you how much time?
I haven't found that yet, and I haven't found if you can appeal either, I've been...
Yeah, I mean, so Tyler would have told me that, because I was very...
And why can't we refuse to change our address and we keep using 345 Middle Pownell?
Well, that'll go out of the USPS system and it'll go out of UPS. It'll...
And if something happens after that, they might not come to your house.
And, you know, it's, it usually takes like three, sometimes six months for UPS and all them to catch up, to be honest. So, I mean, Bob might deliver to you, because he knows you, but when Bob retires...
That's not what I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about all this other stuff, like passports and everything else.
Right, well, you're gonna go somewheres and the passport might bring it up to Mrs. Woodward, and you, you don't live there, that might be a red flag, you may not go on vacation. That's a possibility. Because they check all that stuff, unfortunately.
I think, I think every concern that you have, Kathy, is, is...
We get it.
Is a legitimate concern. I mean, I really, I really, and I sympathize with what you're saying. I, I don't think anyone here disagrees with you or, um, doesn't see your side of it. I think the single biggest concern we have is Timmy's.
Yeah, I, I'm happy with that.
I know, and you, and I know, you guys have always been good neighbors with everybody, I know that, so, I, I, I totally get... And I, and I'm sure Jeremy's, would have the same, I know he has the same concerns, so I talked to him, he called me. Um, I just, from my standpoint, the, the safety of...
Everybody involved.
Somebody is, nah. It's, it's, it's just not there right now, unfortunately, I, I don't... And I'm racking my brain trying to come up with a different... A different solution. And I'm not coming up with anything. I really don't. I'm gonna give Jamie a minute to look up what he's looking up, and then, um...
I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, we're right back to Jeremy coming off Middle Pownell Road.
But then we still, but then we still don't have an address for Timmy and Bobby Joe.
It's not gonna, because of the potential, that doesn't make, that's irrelevant.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if that happened, would the Hurley's and us still be considered Middle Pownell Road?
No.
Hypothetically. Would it be considered Middle Pownell Road? Because it's only two houses.
You would already be switched, as of tonight, you're, will be switched. If they make a decision, you'll be switched to Asher, and there will be no switching back. I guess to answer your question. We're not gonna flip back and forth.
Yeah, I don't think it would flip back and forth.
But you said that there's, how much time in between, you have six months to change everything? And what about an appeal?
There's, I...
So we got an appeal?
You asked about an appeal, and I have not seen anything that's part of an appeal.
I told Tyler, he didn't mention it, except when the board decides, that's it.
Right, I, I think, I, I think if, if we were to vote to rename it tonight, okay? I think we could do our due diligence to find out for you if there is an appeal process, okay?
That's right.
I think we can, we can ask Tyler, um, you know, her, her supervisor, right, is that my...
Yeah, he's the go-to guy.
So, so we certainly, we certainly, from a town's standpoint, could at least look into that process for you and for Jeremy, okay? I think we owe that to, to not, I'm not gonna tell you to go find out if there's an appeal process. We owe you that, at least.
Can you go call him right now, or no?
To find out.
What time is it? I, I don't know, 1:30 to 7:00.
Well, we can find out, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can email him when I get home.
Right, so I think we owe you...
I mean, I could try to call him too.
To find out if there, if there is an appeal process.
I'll start my car.
I'd let it go, Priscilla will...
That's up to you.
No, I think we just let it go. It's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna affect anybody's decision, right? Okay? So rather than try to bug somebody tonight, you know, at 7 o'clock or whatever time it is, 6:45.
The only thing it states, as far as if there's discrepancy on a name, it would be audited through the 911 system within your state to verify that you do not have a duplicate name.
Right, which, I did that.
Right, you've already done, you did your due diligence there, so, but...
So I do, you know, like I said, I do think we would owe that to you and Jeremy, to at least do that for you, for sure. So you wouldn't have to try to track that down. Probably not that difficult, but we have someone we can email and find out right away, and have an answer probably tomorrow on, on an appeal process, if it were to pass, okay?
I mean, I don't think you can hear any longer.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we also, I also, I thought this would be like a 10-minute thing, to be honest with you, whatever, but, but I also...
Not when you're talking about people's lives.
No, that's right, and I also understand where you're coming from, and I want to give you all of the opportunity to express your feelings and be heard. You know, I think we've heard you guys, I, you know, I hope you feel that way too. And we haven't voted on it yet, so...
I mean, we have complained about anything with the Hurley's doing, you know, putting the house in and...
No.
Even the mess they've made in front of our house, we have complained about anything.
The contractor, the social repair, all the damage, and stuff all, you know, the, 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 everything was kind of happened, I saw.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's the way of the world, right? I mean, it's just, you know, I didn't, I didn't contract them for myself for 25 years, and I've left people's places better than when I got there, you know?
I tried.
I tried.
If you're respectful, you try, yes.
I really tried. I think I was pretty successful every time, too. Um, I have, if there's no more discussion, anything relevant, I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second.
Well, thanks for bearing us out.
Thanks for coming. All those in favor of renaming that section of road to Asher Lane?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will, we will, um...
What's, can I have your number?
Wait, can you just leave your phone number with Priscilla or myself?
With a K?
Yeah.
If you, you know, that way we can contact you.
345, 9489.
94 even, 8, 9489?
9489.
Okay, got it.
We will, somebody, either Priscilla or myself, will contact you, assuming we have an answer on an appeal process.
All right.
All right?
And how much, what did you say, six months?
No, I'll give you, yours will become effective January, but honestly, like UPS, FedEx, those people usually take like four to six...
Those aren't the ones I'm worried about. All the other legal stuff I'm worried about.
Right, right. Yeah, that, I mean, I don't know what your timeframe is for that, a driver's license, I don't know how long they...
I'm not sure.
Anything legal.
Right.
Right.
I mean, will, everything.
Your address, so what she's telling you is your address change will not take effect until January 1st of 2024.
Right.
And then...
That's only a couple of months away.
Well, that's true. You're right time by, sorry.
That's not even, not even a couple of months, you know?
Right.
Yep, don't trip on that, Bob.
All right.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks for coming here, thank you for being able to understand the situation. And thank you for...
I'm not understanding.
Well...
Thanks for not closing the door.
Right, thanks, thanks for expressing your concern, yeah, I mean, that's, no, I appreciate that, I, you know, all of us do.
Well, I think if it was you, you would express your concerns too.
Oh, oh, yeah, no, that's why I felt I had to tell you.
And I thank you for doing that.
That's right.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Are there any public comment here? I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.